You're on.
Okay, greetings, everybody. Sorry for the delay. We had some technical issues. This is the Tuesday, April 28, 2020, work session for the Board of Mayor and Alderman. We will be limiting physical access in the meeting room due to current limitations on public gatherings. Accommodations have been made to ensure that the public is able to participate in the meeting. The public may participate in the following ways: watch the meeting on Franklin TV or the City of Franklin website; watch the live streams from the City of Franklin Facebook and YouTube accounts; call into the conference meeting at 1-615-550-8420. Callers will be unmuted and given an opportunity to ask questions during the meeting at specific times. Limited viewing will be available in the lobby of City Hall to watch the live video. The public may email questions before the start of the meeting to recorder@franklantn.gov to be read aloud during the meeting. City YouTube is www.youtube.com/user/cityoffranklin. And the City of, excuse me, the City of Facebook Live is www.facebook.com/cityoffranklin website, and the City of Franklin website is www.franklantn.gov/governments/departments-a-j/communications/franklin-tv. So, consider this the call to order. We'll now move to item-
Item number one, which is consideration of Resolution 2020-42. Oh, I'm sorry.
We need to do a roll call of members present.
Okay, we need to establish a roll call, and I'll start. Alderman Barnhill.
Present.
Alderman Martin. En route. Alderman Branford.
Present.
Alderman Speedy.
Present.
Alderman Berger. Alderman Berger.
Present.
Alderman Blatton.
Here.
Alderman Peterson. Alderman Peterson. Alderman Vice Mayor McLendon.
Present.
So we show six Aldermen present. Is Alderman Peterson picked up again?
And when we see her on this, on the screen, we just did not hear her-
Okay, I was muted, sorry.
Alderman Peterson, are you present?
Present.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to item number one, consideration of Resolution 2020-42, a resolution declaring the Board of Mayor and Alderman members shall meet on April 28 for work session and conduct its essential business by electronic means rather than being required to gather a form of the members-
Present in the same location because it's necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennessee in light of the COVID-19 outbreak. I'd consider a motion.
I heard a second by Alderman Berger and motion was by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's get ready to vote. Alderman Barnhill.
Aye.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Branford.
Aye.
Alderman Speedy.
Aye.
Alderman Berger.
Aye.
Alderman Blatton.
Aye.
Alderman Peterson. Alderman Peterson. Alder, Vice Mayor McLendon.
Aye.
The motion passes, six with two not responding. Next, we'll move on to citizen comments. Do we have anyone on the line for citizen comments, Mr. Stuckey?
Do you have any callers on the line? No one on the line.
Okay, so we, we do have some announcements to make that we need to interject here that have to do with new guidelines from the Governor and new executive order, and also an update on the COVID-19 pandemic. I think Michael Walters Young and Mr. Stuckey were going to make some comments about COVID-19 and the results in Williamson County.
So let me have Michael pull up on the screen share. This is a graphic we pulled together.
All right, can you hear me, Pam? All right, this is a graphic we pulled together earlier this week to show the eight-day case, confirmed caseload within Williamson County. Obviously, that's broader than the City of Franklin, but it does give you a sense of where we've been in the course of the past seven weeks related to COVID-19 cases-
In our community, the first in the state of Tennessee was in Williamson County dating back to March 5, and this shows the track record since then. Beginning Friday, as we shared with you on Friday morning, we moved towards compliance with the Governor's reopening guidelines, the program called Tennessee Pledge. And this has now been enhanced today or added to today with additional guidelines related to the opening of gyms and fitness centers on Friday, along with universal business guidelines that have been in place since last Friday, and guidelines for the opening of restaurants this Monday, and of retail stores tomorrow across the state of Tennessee. We've had some questions about whether this was appropriate or wise for the City of Franklin and in Williamson County to take those on, and I think when you look at this graphic that we're sharing with you on the screen, that that helps make that case in terms of the significant decreases that we've seen, especially in the last two to three weeks. The last two weeks in particular, we've seen, we look at a seven-day growth rate, a lot of the tracking that we've done, and that seven-day growth rate has been 10% or less the last two weeks over an entire seven-day time span. So that, that's encouraging. Today, we had no confirmed cases added to the Williamson County totals. So that really is what supports our, our move towards these measured reopening steps that we are truly seeing in the last three weeks in particular, significant flattening of the curve, and that that is appropriate with these, again, very measured steps to gradually begin to reopen elements of our local economy. With that, we just had issued late this afternoon by Governor Lee, Executive Order 30, which also provides a more comprehensive list of businesses, business activities, guidelines for businesses, and this goes into effect immediately. And as we review this, it really addresses almost entirely the, the types of businesses and activities that we had encompassed in our existing stay-at-home order, which expires tonight at midnight. So with that in mind, we want to transition towards really supporting that, and I believe our actions with the Mayor's guidance here will be to let that stay-at-home order expire tonight at midnight and rely on the exist, the now-in-place Executive Order 30, which provides a great deal of guidance to businesses about what can be open, what cannot be open, and specifically maintains the closure of some of the personal contact-type businesses, which includes barber shops, hair salons, nail salons, spas, bars, nightclubs, entertainment venues, et cetera. So that really addresses some of the gaps that we were concerned about in, in maintaining our local order, and really, I think, helps us move towards just a more straightforward compliance with just the direct orders that have been provided by the Governor and the state of Tennessee. I believe we will continue to look at extending our local declaration of emergency that we've, we've been doing since Friday, March 20. That helps provide some specific administrative authority to address needs in the community and needs as a city, city government. Also addresses some, some other components of both our operations and elements like the, we've got a local ordinance that prohibits the wearing of masks, and obviously, we want to encourage the wearing of masks in these times, so it helps clean up smaller issues like that that are local-only in nature. So we will likely continue on our way with, with that general declaration, and it will continue to also, as we did last Friday, reference the Tennessee Pledge guidance, and that that is our expectation of local businesses, that they will be meeting in, in compliance with the guidelines set forth in Tennessee Pledge. So, Mayor, I think that summarizes it as we transition to this, beginning tonight with the expiration of our local stay-at-home order, and be glad to address anything else you'd like, but we, we feel good about the progress that's been made. As we move into this next chapter, though, we will continue to closely monitor how our, how our confirmed cases are tracking within Williamson County, within our community. So that will be ever-present in our minds as we move into this next chapter. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Stuckey about the statistics or the new executive order 30 from the Governor?
I just hope the Governor realizes we're not going backwards on margaritas to go.
That's included in this order, Vice Mayor.
No, I mean forever.
Oh, forever. I can't speak to that. But we'll move on to item number two, which is consideration of initiating the annexation process and draft plan of services Resolution 2020-24 for the annexation of 2208 Crossway Drive and 1190 Lewisburg Pike, establishing a public hearing for May the 26, 2020.
Thank you. The property being considered is between Bowman Road and Henpeck Lane. It is not contiguous to the city limits and is within the city limits urban growth boundary. However, the property fills an existing hole in the city limit locations to the north and south. There is an attached memo that addresses criteria that city staff considers for non-continuous, contiguous annexation requests. The subject properties are within the large lot residential design concept as defined by Envision Franklin. It is the intention of the applicant to develop the property into single-family residential lots. Envision Franklin states that large lot residential should have an established character of existing neighborhoods and often, excuse me, should reflect the established character of existing neighborhoods and often provide a transition between city and county subdivisions. Envision Franklin further encourages one-acre minimum lots and large lot residential, and that new development should fit contextually with surrounding neighborhoods and designed around natural features. Staff recommends approval.
Comments and questions?
My comment was, I think, one place it definitely says residential, but I think maybe the plan of services or the typo in references to school, so just to clarify that.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Are there any, is there anyone on the call that wants to speak, Mr. Stuckey?
Will we open it up for public comment?
We'll move on to item number three. Consideration of initiating annexation by referendum process and draft plan of services Resolution 2020-28 for the annexation of 4478, 4482, 4484, 4501, 4511, 4540, Patensville Road, 4339 Long Lane, 4460 Pratt Lane, 4431 Dyke Bennett Road, establishing a public hearing for May 26, 2020. Joey, you're going to do this one?
Yes, I will. The city has received annexation requests for the nine properties outlined in yellow there on the map, and it's, they're located in the Goose Creek Basin that are located outside of the UGB. Annexation cannot occur outside the UGB until a referendum has been held, where a majority of the property owners requesting annexation vote to have their property annexed by the city. This resolution authorizes the request to Williamson County Election Commission to hold a referendum on November 3 in conjunction with the state-federal general election. Full timeline of the annexation by referendum is attached in your materials. A draft plan of services has been prepared by staff and attached as an exhibit as well. Because the properties to be annexed are located outside of the UGB, staff recommends an initial zoning of a state residential until Envision Franklin can be updated to evaluate the most appropriate land uses for the properties. Our staff recommends approval.
And I would just note, these are properties that are adjacent to a number of the properties that annexed by referent back in the fall. So, and in at least one of these cases, it does fill one of the, the kind of donut holes that had been created by that annexation. So I believe these are nine properties. Glad to answer any questions you all have.
It looks like a plate of spaghetti to me.
Any other comments, Alderman Martin?
None that, none that I can repeat.
Anybody else want to make a comment? Alderman Barnhill.
Mayor, the, the draft plan of services, where are we on the others that we passed or, or did the annexation on? I guess it was in the October election. Where, are the draft plan of services, the referendum? We're not trying to, are we trying to tie all of this together some way or another?
And those parcels are annexed already, but we have not updated Envision Franklin quite yet. That was scheduled to go to the March Planning Commission meeting, but due to everything with the pandemic, we have held off until June with that update to Envision Franklin. But I believe there are also some water service considerations with Millcroftin that are being worked through, so there's not really a rush in terms of getting those properties addressed within Envision Franklin. We do plan to do that in the next few months, but since we need to have public hearings for Envision Franklin amendments at the Planning Commission meetings, we have pushed those off for a few months.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Berger, you're recognized. Unmute?
Yeah. Emily, who wants to speak to this? So, the yellow is what we're talking about. That the yellow pieces are not, according to what we know, is not part of those 22 properties that were annexed in before, correct? All right. And these are the ones that want to be annexed in with the plan of services?
Yes, the ones shown in yellow are the ones requesting annexation at this time. A lot of the properties that are in that, within that red boundary that you see that are not shown in yellow were just recently annexed with the last referendum last October. But there were a few donut holes. You can see up near where Carruthers hits Long Lane, there's a small parcel there. Then there's about three parcels down on Patensville Road that were skipped over, and some of those property owners have now decided that they would like to come into the city as well. And then several farther out to the southeast have also decided that they would like to come in at this time.
Okay, so it looks like that parcel up by Carruthers is actually a standalone donut hole. That's all by itself. So once that comes in, all surrounding that is already in the city, correct? Okay, so my question to you and to staff would be then, these parcels that are looking to be annexed in that are outside the UGB, in yellow on this map, where does sewer come into that as far as, are we able? I know we haven't done plan of services, but does it look like we are able, according to engineering, supply gravity sewer to these properties?
And there is, a part of the plan of service includes a larger sewer study for this Goose Creek Basin, but it has been recommended by engineering and water and sewer that this, these parcels can be annexed and can be served. Of course, extension of sewer would be at the cost of the property owners who are developing the properties.
Okay, so then we will, if we go ahead with a positive vote on this tonight, then we will, you'll come back and we'll know more about this before we complete our annexation vote.
To add into that, Alderman Berger, is yes, those are within our basin plans. Looking at them right now, the amount of flow will obviously be restricted, but this all flows through Berry Farms and that Goose Creek Interceptor to the Five Mile Creek pump station. So that's something our water department and engineering will evaluate as we move forward.
All right, thank you very much.
And to just clarify, your vote would be to place this on the November election for those property owners to vote whether to annex into the City of Franklin or not?
Well, this, this actual resolution, I believe, is just to initiate the process, and after the resolution to hold the referendum goes to Planning Commission, if this is initiated next month, then it will come back to the Board for a formal vote. And so there's actually two resolutions that will come before the Board, one to initiate, one to hold the referendum.
Right, I just wanted to clarify, this is not the city annexing. This is a process through which the property owners will annex in by vote. That it said that we'd be annexing, we're not annexing, but setting, moving towards a process through which people would annex by referendum.
Sorry, yes, that's correct, sorry.
Mayor, I have maybe one or two more questions.
Go ahead, Alderman Barnhill.
One, I heard that we were having some issues, maybe with Millcrofton furnishing, the, being the person, being the entity that furnishes the water. Are we, are we as a city in contact with Millcrofton in any way? Or are we leaving it to the people or the properties that were annexed and are requesting to be annexed? Are we leaving it to them only? And if someone wanted to work on one of the properties or had some plans for one of the properties that was annexed back in October, they're now waiting on Envision Franklin, correct, before they could do anything? So, okay, well, and we anticipate having Envision Franklin. Give me those dates one more time.
So Envision Franklin is currently scheduled to move to Planning Commission in June. It had been planned to go in March, but that was about a week after we were just given permission to hold virtual meetings. So the Planning Commission can consider land use plan amendments at the March, June, September, and December meetings. So June is the next available date for that amendment request. And then we also have Greg Gamble. He's joined us on this call. He probably has the most information about Millcrofton and those conversations, so I would turn that over to him.
Yes, Alderman Barnhill, answer your question. I have been working with the City of Franklin Engineering Department, City of Franklin Fire Department, and Millcrofton to address the water service need there. There is a water tank that sits adjacent to the City of Franklin's water tank on Long Lane that serves Lad Park North. There is not sufficient water tank to provide for the South. So we'll need to construct a new water tank, and the private development community is working very closely with Millcrofton right now to, to resolve that and figure out a workable solution for everyone involved.
Other comments or questions?
I have a question.
Alderman Martin.
I noticed that there is a, a neighborhood meeting on Envision Franklin amendments on May the 4th. Can somebody tell me about that meeting, or is that connected with this or something else?
Give me just one second. Let me look at what, which meeting that is.
It would not be related to this.
I don't actually have that one on my calendar. There are several development plan admin, or development plan neighborhood meetings scheduled for next week, and then into May, we do have a couple of Envision Franklin amendment requests. They are related specifically to individual properties. The one that you just heard about, the previous item at Crossway Drive and then Lewisburg Pike, I believe that one is coming in for a plan amendment to Conservation Subdivision. There's also, so it could be that one, but there's also two other amendment requests that we expect to see in June that must hold neighborhood meetings this month. So I can follow up with you and get you that information after this meeting.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments? Is anyone on the phone want to make a comment?
Do you have any public comment on the phone line? Nothing, Mr. Mayor?
Seeing none, we'll move on to item four, which is a change order number one to the Municipal Services Complex Improvements Project, City of Franklin Contract Number 2019-0236 in the amount of $514,674.16 with Civil Constructors, Constructors, Inc.
Well, this may be a sizable change order in terms of dollar amount. It is actually anticipated and incorporated in the overall budget for this project. It, it works off of the, the dollar amounts in terms of the quantity and the rates established in the bidding process for this project, and, and still is within our, our budget for completion. I'll let Paul talk about the specific work that's going to get done through this change order.
Paul?
All right, you should be able to hear me now, I'm sorry. You should be able to see my screen here. If you'll remember, we proved a contract with Civil Constructors to basically concrete this large parking lot here where it was failing. We always knew that we had a Phase Two, which is the highlighted area, and again, that pavement has totally failed. Some of those structures are actually sitting sideways and need totally redone. And so, again, as Eric stated, this was bonded money through the 2017, 2019 bond issuance, and we are recommending approval of this change order and happy to answer any questions.
Seeing no comments, is there anyone on the phone?
A public comment on the phone line? Nothing, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, a question.
Alderman Berger.
Can someone speak to the funding of this, Eric, probably? When I see that the additional Phase Two cost, and says the new contract total and the total budget cost of over $3 million, funded through bond insurances in 2017 and 2019, can you explain how that's funded through bond insurances? Through those years?
That's bond issuance. So we issued-
I meant-
Obligation bonds to support these projects. So when we build our, our financial plan for our capital investment program, there are some projects that rely on bond funding, others that rely on impact fees or other funds like through the hotel tax or facilities tax. But in this case, this project was identified primarily as a, a general obligation bond-funded projects. We sold bonds in both 2017 and 2019 to support this, and this, as you see here, the costs are within our, our plan that's supported by those bond, bond issuances.
That's what I wanted to know. So we sold those bonds in 17 and 19 for that?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, consideration ordinance 2020-06, an ordinance to amend the Title 16, Chapter 6 of the City of Franklin Municipal Code- an ordinance to amend the Title 16, Chapter 6 of the City of Franklin Municipal Code to video film and a photography production permit and to amend Appendix A, Chapter 16 of the City of Franklin Municipal Code.
I'll just make a quick comment as we start this up. This is something that we've had some guidance in place in our ordinance. It's somewhat outdated, and this is a project that Holland Shoehouse, our management fellow, worked on with our communication team to look at what some of the best practices are in other communities and wanted to bring this forward for your consideration as a discussion item tonight. So Holland, take it away.
Sweet, thank you, Eric. So if we can move on to the next slide, please. We'll have Monique talk about some of her experiences that she's had with media production in Franklin.
Hello. From time to time, we do get requests for these large scale productions. And you've got a couple of examples here, the Brad Paisley music video and the infamous Justin Bieber video, music video from a few years ago. But we also have other ones too, like there are a few reality shows that are now filming in Franklin. We get photo shoot requests, we get commercial requests, just all kinds of things. And, you know, they take a lot of staff time to review, the larger they are, especially public safety, public works and risk. And so we try to get as many details from them as we can, like logistics for setup and teardown and the length of time, but they don't, things are usually different on the day of filming. Takes more time, they're there longer than we want them to be, or, you know, they have way more equipment than we thought they were going to have. Most of them typically want to be downtown, typically want to close a street or get parking spaces or be in one of our parks. So we asked Holland to kind of, you know, look at some best practices in other places just to see, just to kind of, you know, get our handle, get a handle on these things and just, you know, make sure that we're recovering our costs from staff time and from the use of our public spaces.
Sweet, thank you, Monique. If you could go on to the next slide, please. So in this research, I made sure to look at different cities that also have main streets that are very popular and also have video film or photography permits. The City of Decatur, Georgia, had a great framework for us for administrative paperwork. And the City of Atlanta and City of Dealey had an extensive fee structure that we looked at and we also used for our fee structure. Not, a few cities do have this process in place because you think of it as like a smaller special event. You might have a few people who are invited to this, but you're still going to have streets and sidewalks closed and large equipment like any other special event. And so it's important that we permit this process, like Monique said, so we can get all the logistics in place, make sure that everyone's safe. So if you go to the next slide, please. So we definitely want to change the title of this to be more inclusive of all the different types of media that we have, which includes video film and photography, especially now that social media is used in a professional way. We want more coordination between the City of Franklin and producers so we know exactly what's going on well before they start their production. We want to make sure that everyone is safe, whether that's the producers, nearby motorists, pedestrians, our own personnel who are helping manage this, this space that they have. And we only want this to apply to producers who are making a large scale production, which is basically that they are blocking streets or sidewalks and they might be using large scale equipment that is disruptive. And we're hoping that through this permitting process, that it'll minimize business disruption, especially because a lot of these productions happen to be in downtown. Next slide, please. And then also, we would want to put a fee structure on this in order to make this a more permanent structure because it does take away staff time and staff resources. We are electing to have a $100 non-refundable application fee. This is what we already do for our special events. We also would have a rush fee of four days notice or less, and that would be $300. Because if we have to get personnel involved, we need to make sure that they're able to be there and on time, especially if it's our police officers. We can't just have, pull our police officers off of the road for this one special event. We need to plan for this. We would also want to make sure that we have parking spaces available, especially downtown. We know that's popular, maybe not, not right now. We would want $50 per space per day. And then for police personnel, fire personnel and others, mainly it's for overtime for personnel, and then for police, it's the rate is determined by that department. And once a permit is approved and there's any changes that need to be made, it'll be $100 per approved change and $200 for unapproved change. We really want to make sure that, that producers have everything ready to go and their permit in a reasonable amount of time that we can work with them. And we want to make sure that everyone, everyone's doing the right thing and we need to be up to date. So that is our, our proposed changes to the ordinance and wondering if you all have any questions.
I have a question.
Alderman Martin.
For all of this, for this list of things, starting with Appendix A that you're amending, will that be in the form of a checklist that you can just hand them and let them understand it rather than telling them about it? It would be good to just have a, a piece of paper that they can put in their hands and see what their needs are, because we don't want them to say, oh, I didn't know I had to do that. And so give it to them on the front end in the paper.
Yeah, that's a good question, thank you. That is actually part of the application process. We have, the application has a whole list of things that they can and cannot do. And then they have to provide extensive information, and we also provide that fee structure for them as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have a question.
Alderman Berger.
Yes, Holland, did you by any chance look at Wilmington, North Carolina? Is that city is the, probably has more production than any city on the east coast. And it's got a lot of historic areas, a lot of interesting areas like Franklin. So I would just ask you to sort of look at what they have set up because they're, I would, Delana is pretty good, Georgia, but I would think Wilmington is probably the cream of the crop. So take a look at that if you haven't. The other thing is a question. So this is just large scale, so I'm not sure what large scale means, but I guess it's a number of pieces of equipment and numerous people. But I don't, how do you distinguish that? Where do you, where do you cut that off or how do you distinguish that? That's one question, I've got one more after that.
So I will make sure I look into Wilmington. And for the large scale piece, if they're, if they have to close a public street or public sidewalk using multiple equipment, or they have 15 or more people.
Right, then the other thing is, when you talked about parking spaces, so then if they're going to do this, then we're going to be responsible to find them parking spaces? Is that correct? And then mark it somehow that it's going to be reserved? And I don't know about anybody else on the board, but I just, how did you come up with $50 per space per day? It just seemed a little excessive at $50, but you know, I don't know what anybody else is doing.
So when I researched fees, and there are actually a number of cities that did require fee per space per day. So when we work with a producer and they say they want to film in front of Franklin Theater and they're going to need two parking spaces, we would work with them to determine those two spaces and then work with our streets department and just take a couple of, notifying that.
Okay, so what you're talking about is you're talking about parking spaces for the actual production, not for their crew?
It would apply to a crew too.
So what if they had a crew of plenty of people? Do we go out and reserve those spaces? I don't know how that works, I'm just curious.
We, I'm sorry. We typically have them work with the private parking lot, find spaces for their casting crew. This would just be for film.
What private parking grudges do we have?
Parking lots in Franklin.
All right, so they're responsible to find their own on that?
Yes.
That's not a part of this?
Unless they specifically request it, they can go ahead and pay $50 for space.
But I'm understanding the other spaces you're charging $50 per day for is something that they're actually using in the production. So yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Anyone on the phone?
I have a comment, please.
Go ahead, Alderman Black.
I think all of this is great. One thing that I feel like happens historically is that these are not necessarily planned within a long range capacity. I think that this packet will be something that they can receive, and I think it's great. I think that the rate structure is very fair. And I understand Atlanta being a person to look at, but I think Nashville, just because they're our neighbor, and I don't know, I mean, obviously they're a metropolitan city and we're Franklin, but I would love to do some, you know, kind of comparison between Nashville because I think from a production standpoint, we're going to have a lot of spillover from Nashville to Franklin. And I think that it would be great if we can be, again, we aren't the same, but I think that we need to look to our neighbors and see how they do things so that we're not so far out of the range of the expectation. So we're almost driving people to, I don't want to say invite them, they're going to come regardless, but I think it needs to be a little bit more closer to home that we do some comparisons.
I did look at Nashville and they do have a permit, but they do not have a application fee. But I believe they do have a park, a parking space reservation fee.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Alderman Branford.
Monique, do you have any sense how many of these events filming has happened over the past year, past two years? Maybe you can get that data for us. Because is this happening like once a month, once every six months? Only in the summer or spring or once a year? Do you have a sense of how frequent?
I can get you some exact numbers, but they kind of come in waves. Like, you know, this last year, we had a lot of small film permit requests, a lot of requests for B-roll or, you know, just maybe one parking spot for a commercial or sidewalk. The large scale ones, a few years ago, we were getting them quite a bit. It slowed down a little bit, but I can get you some exact numbers.
In that, I think that Landmark Book Area, I think bookstore area, I think they've been doing some filming there, at least. They're, they're on the rise of being recognized nationally. And I think people are coming and taking films and videos of that space. So they may be a place to, how does the private business interact with this? So if you're doing a filming on the street and you're in front of my, like you said, the theater or the bookstore, how does those individual business interact with you or with, with the, with the people who are doing the video?
For the ones downtown, we have them work with the DFA. The theater is pretty specific about who they'll let shoot their marquee, so they'll have to do an agreement with them. Like Landmark, if they're totally on private property, then they wouldn't need a permit from us, only if they're going to be on the public sidewalk or the public street.
Oh, okay, that's good enough, good.
Also, I'm Melissa, the communications manager and work with Monique. And correct me if I'm wrong, Monique, but we get a lot of repeat customers. A lot of producers come back and they have different projects, many, a lot of commercials. But I do think and believe that our fees are a lot less than Nashville. Whenever I filled in for Monique, they're always like, oh, we just love Franklin because you guys don't charge us very much money. So I think we've always been very reasonable. And I don't really think the fees that we're proposing here are out of the ordinary or more than Nashville. What do you think, Monique?
Yeah, we don't currently have an application fee for film permits, and they're always shocked when we tell them that there's not a permit fee. So I think this rate structure will be okay.
I think it's very fair, it looks good, yeah, I would agree with the fee structure.
Anybody on the phone?
Open for a comment from the phone line?
Saying none, we'll move on to item six, which is a resolution adopting the 2025, 2020 to 2025 Consolidated Plan in the first year 2020 through 2021, and Annual Action Plan and Authorizing Request for Housing and Urban Development Community Block Grant Funding. I just wish it said CDBG funding.
Well, not, not everybody knows what CDBG is, so it's always good to spell it out. We are in.
Far in Los Angeles.
We are an entitlement community under the Community Development Block Grant Program, which produces somewhere in the neighborhood, give or take, depending on the year, around $300,000 a year. CDBG funds are targeted to the benefit of low and moderate income families, individuals in our community. And over the years, we, we set out a framework for the allocation of those funds. And Kathleen Stacida helps oversee that. It's administered through our Building and Neighborhood Services Department that we have, with Kathleen and Tom with us tonight to walk through this update of our, our five-year plan related to CDBG. So either Tom or Kathleen, take it away.
Hi all, it's that time of year again for the first annual action plan and this year, the 2025, 2020, 2025 five-year plan, as Eric pointed out. In the past five years, from the 2015 to 2020, the city has received approx, just under $1.5 million in CDBG funding. We do anticipate the funding to continue at approximately $300,000 a year. And of that funding, the city does get to recoup 20% of the total funding for admin and planning purposes. And this new five-year plan proposes to continue to distribute the funds that we have, as we have in the past, as Eric mentioned, to assist our low to moderate income people, the majority. But just to point out, with all of your support, these funds in the last five years, we have been used to construct eight new affordable deed restricted homes in the city. We assisted FHA with both sewer construction for Reddick Place, infrastructure costs for Chickasaw, Bridges Domestic Violence Shelter. We assisted with a safety issue for them. And they, I talked to Linda today, she's still very grateful. We have rehabbed approximately 45 homes for our most vulnerable residents, which ensures that they live in a safe and decent housing and have peace of mind. I think that's very important. I hope we can continue to do that so we can preserve the neighborhoods and the people are allowed to stay in their homes. We have also purchased a vacant lot, which ended up having a, we built a new deed restricted home on that. And of course, we continue with fair housing outreach and education. And we have met all the guidelines that HUD has requested we meet with the funding, and I look forward to moving this plan further into the 2025. Any questions or comments are always appreciated.
I have a question.
Go ahead, who's that? Alderman Martin.
Do we have any, do you ever have any funds left over that you have a little savings account that you can fall back on?
Generally speaking, we try, HUD really encourages you to spend the funds in the year you receive them. And the City of Franklin Staff Housing Commission have been very diligent about awarding the amount of funds we have and moving them forward. Rarely do we have anything left.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Berger.
Yes.
Go ahead, Alderman Berger.
The eight deeded, deed restricted, are they all homes?
Yes, yes, Rucker Avenue, Natchez Street, Green Acres, Granberry. Yes, yes. Rucker Avenue, Natchez Street, Green Acres, Granberry Glass Street, Hard Bargain, they are all single-family homes that we use the CDBG funds for, yes.
And then you mentioned, uh, that you said there were forty-five homes that have been rehabbed. Over what period is that?
Five years. That's from twenty fifteen to current. We have done forty-five homes. This, and those include, a lot of it is flooring, because it becomes a trip hazard, heating and air units, windows, doors.
Yeah.
ramps.
Those again are single-family homes again?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, that's impressive, forty-five. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Anybody else? Anybody on the phone, Mr. Stuckey?
I raise my hand.
I'm sorry, Alderman Blatton.
Hi, Brandy. I'm hitting the request to speak on Civic Clerk, but I don't guess it's showing up. Okay, um, I just wanted to thank Kathleen for your dedication to this project that we are able to participate in, um, and your passion. I think, um, you know, we keep trying to move the needle on affordable housing, and we will one day, but to be able for this to be something that really does actually put people in homes and teaches them how to get in homes, um, I think it's a blessing for us to be able to have this opportunity. So, I, I just, I do know how passionate you are about this, Kathleen, and
Thank you, Brandy.
Um, I'm proud to have you working this, um, community block development block grant for us. Thank you.
I appreciate your kind comments. Thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, anybody on the phone, Mr. Stuckey?
Let me make, I'll hit the phone lines here in just a second, but let me make one additional comment. Uh, another project that Kathleen gets to work on right now is there's additional funds that have flowed through the Community Development Block Grant Program, about two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars targeted to COVID- nineteen-related responses, and our, our approach has been to look at ways that we can channel those funds to nonprofits that are particularly uh, stepping up right now related to COVID- nineteen responses and needs. And so that's something Kathleen is working on. I think we've referenced it a little bit in, in one of our previous meetings, but um, it, it is another benefit of us being in, in part of a, being an entitlement community and working on these, uh, these facets. So I appreciate all the work Kathleen always puts into the program, but there's an added extra project right now related to these COVID- nineteen, uh, dollars, and, and we look forward to getting those out to folks who are doing really good work in the community. So I'll, I'll stop my comment and we'll go to the phone line. Any public comment on the phone line?
Saying none, we'll move on to item number seven, which is a City of Franklin contract twenty twenty dash zero zero four-two Parkland Impact Fee, Payment of Fee-Only Agreement for Woodlands PUD between the City of Franklin and SWJ Two at Tennessee LLC for the payment of two hundred and ninety-two thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars.
This is a pretty straightforward payment of those fees. I'll let Lisa chime in if there's anything else to add.
Nothing else to add, just what was in the caption.
Any comments? Anybody on the phone?
Any public comments from the phone line? Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Where, where's the? Just wanna know the location.
I'm sorry, Alderman Berger, what did you, I missed what you said.
Location of the Woodlands?
This is near Uncle Rutherford's, uh, so it'd be in the quadrant two, closest to the southeast municipal complex is where the funds would be applied.
Okay, thanks.
Item eight, ordinance twenty twenty dash oh-three, an ordinance to amend Title twenty-five, Chapter four of the Franklin Municipal Code, known as Requirements for Parkland Impact Fees and Parkland Dedication.
So really, items eight and nine will work together. Uh, this relates to some updates, uh, related to our Parkland Impact, uh, ordinance and Parkland Dedication Ordinance uh, that we updated and put in place a couple of years ago. We've had a few years of experience with it. And as we look at it, we've had some things that we've learned and would like to suggest that we look at for, for updates and improvements. Um, we'll have, uh, I think Vernon's gonna start us off, and then we've got Alyssa and Lisa to talk us through the specifics. So Vernon, take it away.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. Um, you may recall, um, around the first of the year, we, we came before you and Alyssa presented, um, the changes that are codified in these two amendments um, that we had worked, uh, starting last fall with the development professionals um, on trying to make the ordinance more workable. So I'm gonna let Alyssa, uh, since she's done the lion's share of the work, uh, review those same, um, amendments that are proposed that we shared earlier. And if you have any questions, uh, Lisa, Kevin, Alyssa, I'll be happy to try to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Vernon, and thank you, members of the board, for having me on tonight to present this to you. Um, just wanna confirm that the PowerPoint is showing on the screen share. Okay, thank you. So first, this presentation is gonna summarize the information that's contained in these amendments. Um, in the First Amendment twenty twenty dash zero three, um, we have added some clarifications to the definitions for dwelling units, parkland dedication, phase, and total parkland impact fee. Um, specifically with the definition for dwelling units, we've clarified how this ordinance applies to state-licensed beds. Um, we've added that these, we will not assess parkland impact fees on state-licensed beds. Um, we've added some clarification for parkland dedication and a reference to an exhibit that was included in the ordinance. We've added the definition for phase, which was not previously included, and we've clarified the definition of total parkland impact fee obligation to just more specifically give some guidance on what we mean when we say that. Um, we've also restructured the timing of the payment of the parkland impact fees, currently under the ordinance that require to pay the full amount at the first final plat or the first building permit when a plat is not required. Um, we understood that this places a heavy burden on developments. So we have, we're proposing to change, um, the timing to twenty-five percent of the fee collected um, for community parks at the first final plat or first building permit when a plat is not required, with the remainder of the fees collected at a prorated rate for every building permit pulled. So each time they pull, pull a building permit, they'll pay a prorated fee of the four thousand three hundred and four dollars. Um, they'll essentially be paying seventy-five percent of that amount per building permit. And the reason we're collecting the twenty-five percent upfront is so these developments that come in that may not be, um, receiving offsets of their full parkland impact fee obligation, we then can go ahead and budget and, um, put those fees towards capital projects or other such items. Um, we've also clarified the timing of the, of when the amenities need to be constructed. Um, we had previously not had, um, specifics on when this needs to occur, so we've proposed that as they develop each section that is adjacent, they need to, um, construct their adjacent parkland as well, um, rather than putting parkland towards an end phase or something like that. They need to build it as the need is being created. We have also added a clarification for eligible offsets based on density. This is our, um, based on our current service level, which is sixty-nine point four-one acres per one dwelling unit of parkland. And then we've also restructured our offsets. Um, in order to be eligible for a one hundred percent offset, the amenity needs to be a public parkland amenity that's dedicated to the city, that the city takes ownership of and maintains. It must be equal to or exceeding five acres when their density allows, and it does include the value of the land that the amenity is being constructed on. For the middle tier, we have a seventy-five percent offset. The initial twenty-five percent that's collected will be put towards community parks, and the remaining seventy-five percent is eligible for an offset, which includes private parkland dedication that is open to the public. Um, these are amenities that are open to the public but are privately owned and maintained. They must be located in an all-access public easement, and we do include the land value in those amenities as well. And the final type of offset that we have is a fifty percent offset for private parkland improvements. Um, we're not considering the land value in these items, since the city will not be involved in, um, maintaining the land. And that is actually an increase, under the current ordinance, we only offer a twenty-five percent offset, so now we're gonna increase it to fifty percent for those private amenities. And then this is, um, in reference to the second ordinance, um, twenty twenty dash zero four. For Appendix A, we've removed a lot of redundant language from Appendix A that already appears in the ordinance or is being added into the ordinance through, um, twenty twenty dash zero three. And it also inserts figures into Appendix A, which were previously only located in ordinance, the original ordinance twenty sixteen dash twenty-five. Um, and the reason that we are moving all of our fees to that location instead of having them in both places or splitting them up is so that every five years, when the county does the reassessment and we need to amend these fees, we will only need to do an amendment to append, or an ordinance amending Appendix A rather than two ordinances and having the information split up in different places. So that is what is included in these two ordinances, and myself, Lisa Vernon, and Kevin Lindsay are available for questions.
Questions or comments?
Is that on raw land, the value, the land value, is that on raw land?
Vernon, I'm gonna let you answer that question.
The, the, um, the value of the land is outlined in the ordinance, and that, that value comes up, uh, based on our analysis of, uh, when the county does its reassessment, that we look at um, all the property within the city, vacant land, and we do take out the land that's along the I sixty-five corridor, because that is is usually not used for parkland so much, um, and, um, it is, it has a higher value. So that's a predetermined amount. And we also take a look at the land that's in a flood plain to apply a value for that.
So it is, it is an unimproved land type of land-only value.
Before improvement's made, correct?
Are there comments or questions? Anybody on the phone?
Have any public comment on the phone line? Nothing, Mr. Mayor?
We'll move on to item ten then. Consideration of Draft Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-nine, a resolution approving the contribution to be determined to Harpeth Associates for the installation of a new signalized pedestrian crossing on the west side of the Main Street, First Avenue intersection across First Avenue, and the installation of approximately three hundred feet of multi-use path on the north side of First Avenue belonging, I'm sorry, beginning at the corner of Main Street, First Avenue West, along First Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, I'll have Vernon kind of walk you through this. Both items ten and eleven are some partnership opportunities to improve some pedestrian access and potentially work to get some, some property that might serve as a trailhead at some point for, um, a, a, a trail connection in downtown. Uh, this, uh, opportunity that came forward and, and some discussions with both Harpeth Square and with, uh, Andy Marshall over at, uh, Pockets Americana Grill and the Pockets family of, of, of properties and restaurants that are in downtown. So, uh, this is something that might be, that we are exploring and bring, uh, a partnership together to help, uh, brings some additional infrastructure and connectivity, uh, in this portion of downtown. So Vernon, take away.
Thank, thank you, Eric. Um, the, the resolution, as it sits today, is obviously a, a bit premature, but we wanted to bring it forward, um, quickly as, um, the Harpeth Square contractors were, um, completing the improvements around their new property. And they're, they're in the process of moving and completing, um, the improvements to First Avenue. And, um, as we had some conversation, as Eric mentioned, with, uh, Mr. Marshall and um, of the America Tap House, uh, Steve Bacon from Harpeth Square also mentioned that if, if the city is able to participate perhaps on, um, extending the sidewalk from Main Street, um, down towards Bicentennial Park or the curb in First Avenue, um, for, for a distance of about three hundred feet, that they may be willing to participate in that too, which would include, um, about, um, an eight-foot sidewalk, concrete sidewalk, two feet of pavers to the curb line and the decorative light posts. And then also as part of that, um, our engineering team, um, decided that it'd be appropriate now, since the, the road's going to be re-topped and improved, to put a signalized pedestrian in, um, crossing from Harpeth Square, um, to the American, to the corner where the Americana Tap House is. And as you can see on the illustration, that includes a, um, a brick paver crosswalk. It'd have signalized, uh, pedestrian signalized crossing, but also a raised, um, um, area for pedestrians to stand, um, in the event that vehicles are turning, um, onto First Avenue that are heading south on Main Street. And we had, um, talked about that since the, uh, property that's on First and Main that's currently under construction and Harpeth Square become fully occupied, that the amount of pedestrian traffic is likely to increase. In addition, um, the exit to, from the parking structure that's part of the Harpeth Square property and hotel and multifamily and retail use, there is an exit that exits out from that parking structure to First Avenue mid-block. And people, um, will, um, will be well-served being able to walk uh, towards Main Street in front of the retail spaces and then cross safely, uh, should they want to cross the bridge to go, um, towards Harlinsdale Park, the, the factory, or to the Americana Tap House, um, to frequent those businesses. Now, the plans are being finalized. We had thought they would be finalized now, and Steve Bacon from Harpeth Square would be able to obtain an estimate from their contractor doing the work, but, uh, that hasn't come to fruition. So we hope to have what they will be asking, um, from the city to participate in these improvements. Prelimarily, we estimate that the sidewalk, uh, being extended at three hundred feet will uh, be about sixty thousand dollars, and the signalized, um, pedestrian crossing and the related work, um, probably about a hundred and twenty-five, maybe a little bit more north of that, but we want to have exact numbers before we come back to the board and would expect to do that on May twelfth again.
Questions?
Uh, I don't have a question.
Alderman Blatton.
I'm sorry, let me, um, excuse me. I had the opportunity to see the, I guess, draft of what this might look like. And, um, when Vernon talks about the opportunity and Eric for a trailhead, um, I would love to see if there's any way, even if those drawings aren't final, that the board could see what the vision was. that the board could see what the vision was because I think it really helps put things into perspective. So I understand we're in crazy times and things aren't able to be produced at the drop of a hat, but I think it's valuable insight moving forward to be able to make a decision on this.
We can look to provide that for you. I think we can track that down. This is obviously part of a larger puzzle, piece of a larger puzzle. But we've talked about having that connectivity of trail along the river, especially on the downtown side, connecting Bicentennial ultimately to Pinkerton is the broader vision down the line. So we'd be glad to try to help with it.
Alderman Martin.
I also have seen the proposed plan and I was very impressed and I think it, it would certainly add to that lovely corner down there.
Any other comments?
Well, I think this, Mr. Mayor, Alderman Burger.
We had Alderman Burger.
I think this is the time to get it done. It's never going to be any cheaper to do it and we've got some partnerships here. I think we ought to bite the bullet and get this done with the partnerships.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes, to just confirm, I haven't seen the plans, but I guess this is taking it from the bend at first along the river to connect where that existing path is. It kind of gets you to Bicentennial Park that can get you I guess the right center.
Ultimately, we'd be part of that solution, but this is a more of a segment along first by the Americana Tap House. Vernon, you want to describe that a little more?
Alderman and Eric, as many of you know, the Friends of Franklin Park has been working on some connectivity in the downtown area too. And I would first start on the building of First and Main on the other side of the street where the former Dotson's was. I'd have you take a look if you haven't already and look at the trail that they put in between the end of, the north end of their building and the, and the river. And that's part of a bigger plan to go across the, the ligand property to connect to Pinkerton Park. And we'll provide you at the next work session, an illustration that shows that alignment. This particular piece is about a three hundred foot section and after this item, I'm going to talk about asking your consideration for approval to condemn a, a couple irregular shaped properties that then will allow us to get down to the curve. And the Anderson property where, where they have their business. And then at some point, the, the intent would be to either obtain an easement or the property to extend this path all the way to Bicentennial, to Bicentennial Park. But I, I will show that and it is indeed a partnership and I is I, I regret that we were unable to obtain the cost of these improvements and what Harpeth Square would contribute and the, and the city would be asked to contribute. But the, the idea is, is to do these improvements while the road is being torn up and the contractor is on site. Even though it's, it's part of the bigger picture.
Go ahead and talk about the condemnations.
Okay. I suspect Michael is, is going to pull up that illustration. It's pretty, pretty straightforward. There are two irregular shaped parcels that are, are close to the curve. Harpeth Square, actually, the Trails Committee and Friends of Franklin Park and the Trails Committee had been working on trying to obtain and Steve Bacon and Harpeth Square had taken that on themselves. And what they have found is that there is a variety of, of family members, probably about thirty, that are scattered throughout the country that some are willing to sell, but the others haven't been able to be contacted. And the value of that property is about ten thousand dollars. And we, we're seeking your permission to allow our law department to pursue condemnation for this public improvement. And Brandy had mentioned, and again, I'll try to track down an illustration of how a future trailhead or outlook over the, the Harpeth River because there's some additional room to improve a seating area that, a rendition that was very nicely done that shows potentially the vision for how we utilize these two properties. But the second regu- resolution is simply straightforward to allow our law department to proceed with condemnation so we can legally contact these property owners and acquire these properties. So at some future time, be able to extend this multi-use path further west and eventually connect to Bicentennial Park. Thank you.
Any questions? Seeing none? Anybody on the phone?
Do you have any public comment on the phone line? Nothing, Mr. Mayor?
Well, we're ready to go to item twelve, which is a highlight of a capital project, which I think we delayed last time. So.
Yeah, we're going to highlight the McEwen Four project. So Paul will take us through that. Paul?
All right, we will run through this. If you can't see my screen, just please let me know. So very similar to the presentation we did with Franklin Road, we'll go over the project development overview, a project overview, utility coordination, property acquisition, the permits and regulating authorities that we're going to have to partner with to get this approved and then talk a little bit about the construction phase. So the estimated project cost is around thirty-six million dollars. Twenty-two point four million of that will be federally funded. So we've got a substantial amount of federal funds in the project, which we're very blessed to have. The total length of the project's eight thousand two hundred linear feet. And we're essentially widening it from two lanes to a four-lane median divided roadway. The existing roadway portions of it are going to get converted to a, a multi-use trail. We had to change the alignment up due to the topography. Instead of just throwing that right away, away in that roadway way and all that infrastructure, we're working to try to convert that into a future multi-use trail that'll serve our citizens for many years to come. We also have new streetlights. We're making some more bridge modifications. One of the parapet rails on the bridge at Wilson Pike is failing. And so we're going to rehab that while we're there. And then we are doing a ton of utility upgrades and a lot of, a lot of relocations with the project. So right now, we're actually making offers on, on the project and it shows that we're in easement acquisition. We've actually completed the final design as well. But we're actively acquiring easements and the final design in our view isn't totally done until T-Dot signs off on it and that we've acquired all the easements. But essentially it is. And, and the reason we don't do that is T-Dot may still have comments and some of the property owners typically will request minor changes to the plans. And we accommodate those as we can. And so those plans are again, always developing until that bid date. But so yeah, right now we're acquiring easements. This is the T-Dot process because there are federal funds. We got to follow this process and it they'll tell you their own process can take five to seven years to get through because it's very cumbersome and they make you go through a lot of different regulations to make sure that the project's ready to develop or ready for, ready for bidding construction, that that's always attached when you're using those federal dollars. So as far as utilities are concerned, we're working with our, our City of Franklin Water or Sewer Department, we're relocating Force Main, working with Atmos Energy. They have a major Atmos line that runs through the project that we have to relocate. We have a large AT&T switch that needs to be moved. And we're having to relocate Middle Tennessee Electric and then all the providers that are attached to the poles. But those are pretty easy because they generally just follow the pole alignment. So utility coordination, to achieve a speed limit of forty miles per hour, we have to drop the road in certain locations about twenty feet. That is a huge cut. And what makes this project uniquely challenged is trying to maintain utility service during construction. So we've actually developed a three-phase utility plan to relocate utilities in phases. In many cases, we're having to temporarily relocate utilities to maintain basic things like water, electric, gas, et cetera. So it's a very, very complicated relocation job. Not a lot of relocation work, but it's very complicated. Property acquisition, we're dealing with nineteen tracks on this project. And we're already making offers now. We're anticipating about twelve months to acquire all the property that's needed. And that would include having to go through the condemnation process and then we'll be turning those over to review for T-Dot, which will add some additional time into that right-of-way phase. So as far as regulating authorities and permits, obviously we got to get approval from T-Dot. We got a few permits that we have to get from T-Deck as relates to the water main, as relates to the sanitary sewer force main. And then as we cross over CSX, we're having to work with CSX, which takes some time. Just kind of a highlight project summary. You can see in this one exhibit, we're actually having to build a temporary roadway so that we can build and construct the utilities and then divert traffic onto it. And that temporary roadway, which is shown right here, will actually serve long-term as our multi-use trail. And so we're, we're building about one point four miles of roadway improvements, relocating three thousand linear feet of water main, relocating four thousand five hundred linear feet of sanitary sewer force main. We're going to be putting about one point four miles of fiber optics in the ground, two point five miles of gas main. We're actually running two gas mains, a low pressure and a high pressure main. Three thousand six hundred linear feet of walls. You can see the walls. Some of the wall sizes are pretty large on this job or larger than what we typically have to deal with. We also have signal modifications we're doing at Wilson Pike and bridge modifications. So it's, it's, we anticipate, given the utility issues and the large cuts, that this project is a two and a half to three-year construction timeframe. And generally what we do is when we get closer to bid, we sit down with a few contractors and run through the project with them to one, try to get their interest in bidding and then two, to help us understand their thoughts on construction timeframe so that we can be as aggressive as possible, but we, you know, we don't want to be, we, we want to make sure we set that time appropriately, but not give too much time. So that's a high-level overview of the project. It's very complicated. Right now it's just kind of being submitted to T-Dot and running through that T-Dot process and right-of-way acquisition is what we got going on right now. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do you want to make a quick note? One of the things Paul and Jonathan in particular worked on, the board dealt with a tough decision on this project whether to take in the ten, ten million dollars initially of federal funding. And that ten million has now turned into two point four million dollars because we're able to get a, a second shot at some additional federal funds. So we now have over sixty percent of this project being, being funded by federal dollars. Now that comes with additional process and, and timeline and that's unfortunate, but we're very grateful and, and I'm thankful for the work that Paul and Jonathan put in to help us get that additional funding here for this project as well.
Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Hello?
I'm glad you're going to say something, Alderman Burger. I think this is in your ward.
Trying to get off. Okay, hang on. It's okay. There it is, finally. Thank you so much, Paul. You guys have been amazing. You and Jonathan and your team have worked so hard on this and it's every time I look at it, it seems more and more and more complicated and it is just a it's just what it is. It is what it is. It's just a very complicated piece of roadway. The train is, is crazy complicated. And I just want to thank you publicly again for all the work you've done and putting up with me and all of my questions all the time. But we continue on. I know you'll keep me informed and I know you'll keep the board informed and trying to do everything you can to move these the, not the acquisitions, but the what am I looking for? Not, not the acquisitions, but the appraisals through. And I do have one big concern and as we've watched that roundabout get taken care of over here and all the headaches we've had with that, my biggest concern for this project will be that we select the right company and the right people to do this job because number one, it's so complicated. It's a huge job. It's a very costly job and I'm really, really thankful for the sixty percent that's coming towards this project because that means to all the other aldermen in our city that we have freed up enough funds that we can put in other projects, especially during this time where we don't know where additional funds are going to come from. I think this has been extremely helpful to us. But because of the complications, the time and the cost, everything else, and we want this road done right. I think my biggest concern will be who does this road and how we go out to bid and how you work with them. So just want to say that upfront. That's going to be my, my biggest concern from here on out. I'm not concerned that you and Jonathan and team will get, get on, make sure that this moves on with the appraisals and the acquisitions of the property and then we get out to bid. So thank you again and, and I don't know if there's anything you can do to relieve my worries and concerns about the actual construction of this, but it is my concern. Thank you very much.
No, thank you for your kind words. I, I'll say that we have a great team that works on this. I don't do all this myself. There's a lot of people that contribute and help on the engineering team with the project. And one of the things that we've recently done is hired David Diaz as a contract administrator. And I know one of the things we've talked with him about, I'm sure he'll be helping with in the future, is looking at how we pre-qualify contractors and set expectations so we're not just subject to the lowest common denominator as far as public bidding is concerned. And on a job this size, we will definitely be setting very high criteria for who can bid this type of work.
Yeah, and I think you're very, I think you're very correct there that we don't necessarily take the lowest bid on this project. This project's going to require quite a bit of expertise and we must get the right company and the right bidding done on this. Again, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Any other comments? Are there any public comments, Mr. Stuckey?
Any public comments on the phone line?
Okay, we're through with the agenda. And I think we're ready to adjourn. And we'll be back at seven o'clock for the regular Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting. So thanks for everybody's participation.
Thank you.